Good evening. Welcome to the Finance and Operations Committee meeting in person and virtual meeting and the Education and People's Services Committee in person and virtual meeting for September 28, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedure, sir?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President Brown. I certainly will. Before I go through those, I just wanted to say to anybody who are here is with us in person or anybody following us virtually, as we move back to in-person meetings, it's been a little while. This is our second one. Prior to COVID, we did move all of our materials and agenda items to a public domain on our website so you can have the information in advance of the meetings. And so if you go to the school district website, click on the menu button, and then really if you click on School Board, you'll get to know who the school board is, the function, kind of our mission and information when meetings are set. And then you could also find information on the school district website about where policies are, anything that you need to find. If you click the plus button under School Board, it'll take you to a couple links. Tonight, for following along for tonight's committee meetings and links. Tonight, for following along for tonight's committee meetings and for public board meetings, if you click on Board Docs, it takes you to a public site where it gives you access to the meetings, the agenda items for this evening. Obviously, first we'll start with our Education and People's Services, and following that will be Finance and Operations. So if you click on Education and People's Services, oh, sorry, sorry, Finance is first tonight. And then you can click on View the Agenda, and then you'll be able to see all of the presentation items that were available for you this evening. So several years ago, we used to have printed out copies. We moved away from printing out paper copies, and all of this is available electronically. And so if you're with us this evening, we passed a policy where in-person attendees will be able to comment and speak prior to virtual attendees. Virtual attendees this evening will be able to participate by emailing their thoughts into committee questions at upperdarbsd.org. Please make sure that you provide the agenda item you'd like to comment on or question, your address, your name. You can also phone it in at 610-789-7200. Again, make sure you identify the agenda item you'd like to comment on or question, your name and your address, and we will make that part of the record, and we will do our best administratively and the board to answer any questions or concerns that you have. Same process if it's the first time for you attending in person. We ask that when you come to the microphone, you identify yourself by name, your address, and the specific agenda item you'd like to comment on. Sorry for taking so long, Board President Brown. I will make sure that we're able to follow along this evening.
No problem. Feel free to revisit that throughout the evening at your discretion. Before we go into the festivities, I want to just take a minute to pay tribute to one of our colleagues in another district. Everyone knows there's nine of us. We make up the School Board, and every district has the equivalent of us. And over the weekend tragically, Mark Miller from the Centennial School District passed away. Mark was a longtime advocate for public education, a dedicated School Board Director, and a dear friend of PSBA. He will be missed. We'd like to wish our sincere condolences to his family and friends. So I'd like to just do a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Thank you very much. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will please come to order. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Present.
Mrs. Currie.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Pursuant to the Sunshine Act as amended by Act 65 of 2021, the district posted this evening's agenda to Board Docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. As provided in Robert's Rules of Order, a motion is in order to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved. Seconded.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments tonight.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to my co-chair, Mr. Fields.
Take it, Board President Brown. Mr. Rogers, please begin with an overview of your agenda items for this evening, and after the overview, just roll right into the presentations. Thank you.
Tonight, we have three agenda items, one on a facilities update or capital projects update, where we'll discuss the various projects that have been completed over the previous summer, and also the projects that are ongoing as we speak. That is informational. The second item is an update and recommendation of use of facilities, which will require board action. And we are going to review the existing procedures and the use of facilities, process and fee structure, and make administrative recommendations moving forward. The third is a safety and security update, which is informational. Dr. McGary and Mr. Mark Manley will give a presentation on the, an update of safety and security procedures and the, an update on the implementation of the Crisis Go system that has been put in place. This is an annual presentation to the board and is informational. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Marvin Lee to start the presentation on the capital projects and facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. My name is Marvin Lee. I'm the Controller of Operations. I'm going to give you the facilities update, the summer project over the summertime. And this is probably one of the easiest and the quickest presentation I'm going to be giving over the year. And I was also very honored to represent the men and women of facilities management who worked very hard over the summer to make this happen. So a lot of presentation, I'm going to be talking about slides. So there's a lot of slides, before and after pictures, and not too many words. So you're going to be seeing a lot of pictures here. And then we are only talking about the major projects, not small projects, only the major projects I'm going to be talking about. So the first project that we worked on was the bathroom project at Beverly Hills. So that is the picture of the before picture at the Beverly Hills, and you'll be surprised how awesome it looks with the after pictures. So obviously, we're following the same color scheme with the tiles in all the schools. And you're going to also notice the same dispenser system that we implemented about two years ago. We implemented about 2,000, replaced about 2,000 units, and we are same, we're installing the same units so we can be standardized, we can remain standardized going forward as well. So that's the Beverly Hills bathroom project. I wanted to also give kudos to Mr. Craig Harnacek. He worked very hard to make this project happen on time, on budget. So I wanted to give kudos to Mr. Craig Harnacek as well. So next one is a bonus project. This is a project that we started about two years ago, but we recently completed over the summertime. So Beverly Hills now have brand new windows throughout the entire campus. So beautiful. If you haven't been there, be there. The windows are beautiful at Beverly Hills. The next one is the Bayou Elementary School. Yes, so Bayou Elementary School was the elementary school we selected last year, and the entire bathroom facility at Bayou is also fully renovated with the same color scheme and same style, so our students can enjoy the new bathroom facilities. And one more quick thing, we also have a brand new window, doors, door, the front door at the, at the school. So if you haven't been there, it's the Opaldaby School District purple color, and it really pops. So I think you're going to be very happy to see that door, too. The next one is a courtyard at Drexel Hill. This was actually one of the first projects that I wanted to work on when I first came in here about three years ago. And then we're very happy with this project, and Mr. Joe McGilvery gave us a great deal with the research he has done. And now it looks like this. It's a beautiful space, and I feel like that's a space that our students can now enjoy. Before, I wouldn't recommend, maybe a safety hazard, but now, yeah, it's a beautiful space for our students and very proud of the work that we have done. And thank you to Mr. Joe McGilvery as well. And how about small side pictures on the left side? That's actually the security vestibule that we also completed over the summertime, too. So in all our secondary schools, middle schools and high school, we now have man trap. Before the visitors can come through the door, they have to be checked out by our security guard, and that project was also completed over the summertime. The next one is the blacktop project that we have worked on. That's the project that we started maybe about two years ago as well, and now we have completed all the blacktop project in all facilities, maybe except for the main parking lot at the high school. So over the summertime, we have worked on Garreford, K Center, Stonehurst, and High School D Ring parking lot. And we also worked on the speed bumps at multiple schools, Highland Park, Bayou, Drexel Hill, K Center, and Stonehurst as well. So we have done a lot of blacktop work over the summertime. I'm sorry to not being able to show you the actual product of the gym wall pads, but there's a delay in everywhere, in construction and material. So we, the project is being slightly delayed, but all our district-owned schools will have gym wall pads, and it was individually designed for each school. And I'm hearing that the project will be like installed very shortly, very shortly. I can't promise any dates because there's a lot of delay in the industry right now. But all our schools, all our district-owned school will have the gym wall pads, following our guidelines, our style guidelines. So they're going to say Royals and UD logo in our school gym, gyms. So cosmetology, I heard that there was a partnership with the DCIU. It is not fully, fully completed yet, but it's, we are almost there. So our talented carpenters, Chris Rossiter and Bobby Kirby and those guys are working on, worked on this, this project. We are almost there, but not quite yet. But I'm also hearing that it's going to be completed very shortly as well. We're waiting for the material as well on this project. And Opaldaby High School exterior, we worked on several things in the Opaldaby High School exterior. Number one, I think this is a project that actually Mr. Buford had completed the banner at the parking lot that was done in the summertime. And also, exterior new logo was installed. You can actually see it. I also have the old logo as well. And the walk path of the entire perimeter of the campus has been completed, so you shouldn't be able to see any kind of like a crack and anything like that in our, in our high school campus walk path, walk path. Now I'm going to actually hand it over to Mr. Dr. McGary to give updates on-
Can you just go back?
Sure.
Can you go back to that, that slide right, right there? So it's the little things I think that we, we feel are important as we work on carrying this rebranding out. You'll see that all of the elementary schools and the schools are going to get, it's a pet peeve of mine, when I go into the buildings, I see those gym pads around the walls, and a lot of people, Highland Park, other places, they have holes in them. There's like this yellow foam sticking out. So as part of this, carrying it all the way through the facilities and trying to make them points of pride, we are bringing the colors all the way through the schools, not only through the bathrooms, but all the gyms, repainting the gyms, repainting the schools. These little symbols, I think, are important. Dr. Manfred deserves a lot of credit, Mrs. Simone, Joe McGilvery, Craig Rogers. There are little things that you might not notice unless you're coming to the high school and some of the facilities, but that new UD really pops on the side of the building. On the back rear of the building, we're going to put another one that's near, that you can see off of the football field. So when you're looking onto the field, you'll see a UD. It'll be a nice symbol there. We're also looking to put them in some of our elementary schools and middle schools, replacing some of the older exterior with new, the branding, the new UD symbol, that you know where you are when you come onto our campus here. Each of our campuses here in the school district and continue that unifying theme of the rebranding of the school district as we carry it through. So Joe McGilvery, Marvin Lee, Dr. Reese, Mrs. Simone has worked hard to get the banners up here on the high school campus and send that message. We'll carry that throughout, that when you step foot into this community, you know that it's Upper Darby School District is part of that rebranding. And so I just wanted to point out that there's been a lot of work and effort, even the little details, that, you know, during COVID, we haven't lost sight of trying to continue on all those little projects here in the school district. So this map that's up on the screen right now, that's, it's struggling to show a little bit on, I guess, because of the internet, but these are all the big projects that we have working on, on top of those other projects that you just saw. So I'll work my way down from the southern part of the, of the map, and you'll see Clifton Heights. We're happy that, you know, just as recently as 2:30, 3 o'clock this afternoon, Dr. Manfred and I were engaged in a conversation with our attorneys and engineers. We have a meeting tomorrow with Clifton Heights Borough, working with their engineers and just finding, working on some of the final details as we go for a preliminary slash final approval of the plan for Clifton Heights. I can tell you right now that if, if we weren't so delayed in that project with the back and forth, I'm happy that we are where we are now, we would have much more relief in our two middle schools than we're currently, currently seeing. The positive news is that we're going to be moving forward with Clifton Heights in the near future. We have a meeting, like I said, tomorrow, and hopefully sometime in October, we will be announcing that finalized agreement. That will obviously be a part of what the board agrees to and Clifton Borough agrees to, and then we'll move forward with the Clifton Heights project as soon as possible. Kind of going in a counterclockwise rotation, Aronomic Elementary School. Just last week, we went to a township council meeting for Aronomic Elementary School where they passed another resolution. They had to update that resolution based on the timing of the approval with the Delaware County Planning Commission and other approvals. And the DCJA, the Delaware County Joint Authority, asked for an updated resolution to go to the Department of Environmental Protections, DEP, to make sure that all of the items were aligned. So we, Marvin and I attended a township meeting last night, thankfully with little fanfare, little, little bit of fanfare, but not too much upset as it was in the past. The resolution was passed, and the Aronomic project will be moving forward. We also have what we call, I guess, a grading permit to do site work until we get final DEP approval. So now the stumps can be taken out, that were taken out recently. We're looking to put in a parking lot in that area. We're working, looking to put in a temporary cut through to alleviate some of the traffic issues around that property. Needless to say, the Aronomic project is moving forward, and we're looking for full DEP approval any day now. You'll see DH Field and Track, Drexel Hill Middle School. We'll be going to Upper Darby Township. We've already started the process on this. Marvin and our attorneys have already been working with the township on getting approval to move forward with Drexel Hill Middle School. The back of the campus, the track and the field are probably original to the day that the school was built. And so we're looking to put in a new turf field and new track surface on the back of Drexel Hill Middle School's campus. Beverly Hills Middle School has been a little bit more complicated. There is a road in between where the current field is on the front of Beverly Hills Campus and then the steps of the school. It's called E. Cole Road, E-C-O-L-E. We discovered that that really is a township road. It was interesting in listening to the township meeting last week because there was a resolution and an ordinance to vacate E. Cole Road. All this time, E. Cole Road really should have been getting plowed and maintained and taken care of by the township. Here, we've been taking care of E. Cole Road for all, for all of these years, and so it passed pretty quickly to vacate E. Cole Road because the township recognized at least some of the members of township council that have been there for a while, that would alleviate their responsibility to take care of that road. So we had to vacate E. Cole Road to allow us to move forward with on the front of Beverly Hills Middle School, we will be putting in a new turf field on the front of Beverly Hills. Now, Beverly Hills' campus is smaller, and so we can't put a field and track in the same location. We don't have enough space. So we'll be putting a new turf field, lights on the front of Beverly Hills Campus. And on the back of the campus, we'll redo the grass infield and then put a new rubberized track, which is currently a cinder track, on the back of Beverly Hills Middle School. Marvin, by the way, has, you know, done a lot of the hard, heavy lifting on these meetings. It just so happened that we ended up at the township meeting together at the same time. He was here for these projects. I was there to welcome the new chief of police, and we ended up staying till 10 o'clock. And I end up answering questions. I should have stayed home. The new administration building, which is the northernmost on the map, we're happy to say that we're making progress on 8201, also known as the Gulf Building, also known as the Transportation Building. As many of the board members here know, and hopefully people in the audience and maybe those watching, we will be, currently, Upper Darby Central Office is located within the Aronomic Elementary School. We'll be vacating those offices and moving into a newly renovated Gulf Building Transportation Building. Craig Harnacek, Craig Rogers, Marvin Lee, Timmy Leaf, they figured out a way to not expand that building and fit all of Central Office and a new boardroom into what has been called the Gulf Building 8201. That project is moving along. It hasn't been easy, like a lot of the projects here haven't been easy. There are 13 underground oil tanks that we've discovered, that we've had to take care of on that property, that were there predate, most of the oil tanks predate the district even taking over this property. So there were very little records transferred to the school district, and knowing that we've, and if anything, we're actually making that, that property much more environmentally sound by renovating and working on that project. Thankfully, with working with the township, too, the neighbors in that area no longer have to have the trash trucks on that property. The township has moved their trash trucks off that property. It will remain a transportation depot. Central Office will be moving there, and it will free up space in Aronomic to bring more students back to the school district to attend Upper Darby Schools. And in the Carnington Field, the farthest to the right on the, on the map, Carnington School was a school back in the early eighties. I think 1981 was the last time it was a school and it was knocked down. It has since that time been rezoned, from what I understand, to recreational only, meaning you can't build a school there. It's a district-owned property. We've been working with our attorneys and going, hopefully working with the township to look at all the zoning and all the ordinance requirements. We're going to go, hopefully at one fell swoop to the township and say, these are the zoning issues and the ordinance issues that we need to work together to move away from, to allow the school district on a district-owned property to build a new elementary school on the Carnington location. That is really the last property that we have that we can try to alleviate the overcrowding in our elementary schools. So I will be providing an update, hopefully in the next couple of months, on the ability for us to go forward to the township asking for zoning and variance waivers and relief from current zoning to be able to build a new elementary school in the Carnington area. When it's all said and done with these facilities projects, here's what we'll have. We'll have three middle schools, and we'll have three elementary schools feeding each of the middle schools. So we'll provide much-needed space, ease overcrowding in Highland Park. Sanco Elementary School students will be able to return to Upper Darby School District community and not have to be bused outside of the school. And all three of our middle schools will be in the enrollment of around 800 to 900 students per middle school, or maybe, maybe one being at 1,000. Maybe, maybe one being at 1,000. Right now Beverly Hills is over 1,600, Drexel Hill is at 1,400, and they're just simply overcrowded. Beverly Hills Middle School really is almost over 30 students in a classroom right now. And we cannot get three feet of social distancing at all times in those middle schools. So it's a work in progress. I want to say thank you to this Board of School Directors over time for having the courage to continue to fight forward to bring these much-needed projects here to the school district. Kyle, you and your team, Craig Rogers, Marvin and the facilities team and the secondary principals and elementary school administrators. It certainly hasn't been easy, but we're moving forward and there's a lot of positives here to celebrate in the school district. We just have to get there. We just have to get there. So thank you.
That concludes our first presentation. We'll take any questions.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to compliment you on, once again, a comprehensive presentation and we're excited about the progress that we made and we look forward to more. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I also want to say thank you because my children still go to school here. And it really means a lot to be able to have my little girl go into the bathrooms in her middle school and not feel like she has to wait until she needs to come home. And so I really do appreciate it. And for some people, I know that's nominal, but it's a big deal. So thank you very much.
I have a comment too. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. I had a quick comment. A couple of weeks ago, we actually had the pleasure of using the newly renovated Drexel Hill Middle School courtyard to celebrate one of Upper Darby's finest, Lou Gentile. And in that event, I actually ran into Judy, who happened to be my old algebra teacher at Drexel Hill. And it was just that moment of my former teacher and a former board member and then me commenting at our old middle school how these improvements were being made. We were just amazed. So kudos.
I just want to thank you for all the hard work. It's been a long time coming. We've been chipping away at things and I think now we're really on a, on a great path forward for the future of Upper Darby.
Thank you, Marvin. Craig, go into the next presentation.
Yep, you can jump right into the next one.
Marvin. Okay, so next presentation, I'll really giving you updates and recommendations on user facilities. So quick background, so last June of June of 2020, 2020, the board approved Facilitron as a new system that's going to be managing the user facilities. And Facilitron was launched to the public in September 2020. And the first booking of the, the user facilities through the system was September 3rd of 2020. That was the, actually UC Football Club with Mr. Ted Farmer that I get to know really well through the process. We made a change because we wanted to improve the user experience, number one. Number two, we wanted to have a more efficient administrative process because we used to have a paper process that gets lost. And we wanted to have a very robust administrative process. And also we wanted to improve communications because our users don't get to know whether it's approved or not. But through the system, they will get to know instantaneously. We also wanted to capture all the costs to run operations in a single platform as well. So since the launch of the process, new process, we have 72 organizations and 24 individuals that have an account in the system. And 100%, every single request was processed through Facilitron. We have booked so far 135 events. And we have approved, the board has approved 2,200 days, 2,200 days of user facilities through the system. And also one more thing, we also are using the maintenance work of the system through the Facilitron system. So we're trying to standardize all system into a single platform. And hopefully I'm going to be making a presentation on what we are doing with the work of the management system in the future. So tonight, administration is making three recommendations. So number one, youth group certification process. So we estimate we have between 25 to 30 youth groups in our school district. And our youth groups benefit a lot of financial benefit. For example, we are currently charging 42 cents per hour to user facilities right now. But if you are not youth group, we will be charging for the gym 60 to $300 per hour. For the grass field, $20 per hour. So we, they're getting a lot of benefits, but sometimes it's like I'm not sure whether they should be classified as a youth group or not, not, not as a non, non, non-youth group. So we wanted to have a certification process. And we wanted to recertify them on an annual basis or whenever their insurance expires. We will be asking questions about the organizational type. Most are nonprofit organization with a tax code, a tax ID. And we will be asking the residency information of their, the president and the members of the officers. And we will be asking them about approximate number of youth, K through 12 participants, the primary sport, primary venue. And we will be asking for the insurance, insurance information so they don't have to submit the same thing over and over again. So it's going to be, we already have a youth group in our policy. It's basically just to enhance and also streamline the information so we can have a more confidence in approving the youth groups going forward. Changes to the fees. We wanted to waive the fees to the youth group for gymnasium, grass field and gravel tracks. Number one, as I told you, we only charge those groups 42 cents per hour. It's a very heavy administrative burden, especially when they're having refund because the event is canceled. It's very, it's a heavy burden to the administration. And I mean, we are not there to make money from these groups. We wanted to support them. We wanted to support them. So we want to, I mean, we're recommending to waive those fees to the youth groups. But the, the other relay, the direct cost such as the recreation custodian for indoor use will be still charged to both youth group and non-youth groups. And also we would like to ask for the schedule of their athletic schedules because we tend, we have certain groups that's like a blanket the entire calendar. Like they're asking us to approve every single day between, for example, like a 4 to 8. But in reality, they are not actually using those. So we want to make sure that other groups have opportunity to use our fields. So we want to ask for the, the athletic calendar of those groups going forward. Number two, we wanted to also publish the chargeable service cost to our groups. So recreation custodian, these are actually the, the current practice that we are doing in our school district. Recreation custodian, the actual cost to the school district is 17.03 per hour. Building custodian, $37,000 per hour. Security guard, $36,000 an hour. Stadium lighting is $100,000 an hour. And also we charge, whenever there's like a outside event, does not really require any personnel, but whenever they have more than 75 people, large events, we want to require, we require our personnel to oversee their events. And if any outside events wants to use our indoor bathrooms, we also require two recreation custodian to watch what's going on in the, I mean, to, to clean the bathrooms and also man the bathroom outside the bathroom. And also if they, the groups are requiring us to arrange or assemble any furniture, we require building custodians to be there to help out. And sometimes we get asked whether we can provide audio and video equipment and they are not available. So we will try to avoid as much as direct cost as possible. For example, if they're trying to use the middle school or high school, we don't charge you because we already have the night custodians manning the building so they can come in and leave. But sometimes it may be a case that, that we have to assign recreation custodian at elementary school level. If that's the case, we will have to charge those groups. And we also researched the other Delaware County school districts and they're charging between 16 and 36 dollars per hour to provide the support. So again, we're going to be trying our best not to incur any cost to our groups because we want to encourage those activities in our schools because they're a community asset. But if we do incur those costs, we will be passing through those costs to our groups. Next one, I'm not going to read this, but some of the, some of the charges are kind of confusing to, to us and to the groups. So we wanted to make all rates into hourly rates. So they don't have to try to understand what it says. So we're going to give you, it's a $10,000 an hour, $20,000 an hour. So they can, they can actually easily understand those rates. High school pool. So we used to have four major programs at our high school pool. Number one, birthday party package. We used to offer birthday party package through the pool brochure. They get to use 50% of the pool and a room to have a birthday party. And we used to charge $150 for residents, our school district resident and $175 for our county resident. Our recommendation is to discontinue that. Number two, pool members, number two and three kind of goes together. Pool membership program and the recreation swimming program. So we charge nominal fees to our residents and our county residents between 25 and 160 dollars per year. But if you look at a local YMCA, they charge 45 to 90 dollars per month. And number one, it's not financially feasible for us to continue this program because we have to have a lifeguard and supervisor to run these kind of programs. And number two, the participation is very low. We get maybe 10 to 20 people on average in each session. So recreation swimming, those members can come, used to come to the recreation swimming. Monday through Sunday, we offer recreation swimming every single day. Sometimes even the morning, even during the school day from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I think that's like a, I don't think that's appropriate to have outsiders in the pool during the school year, I mean, school, school day. And also we used to have an evening swimming as well. Again, we have a very low participation of those swimming programs and it's financially not feasible for us to continue this program as well. Swimming lessons, very excited to let you know this. We talked to our athletics team and they're willing to take over the program and offer the swimming lessons to the residents by our swim coaches. And they will be using that opportunity to actually fundraise for our swim team. So I think that's a great program. So we will have meeting in the future to announce that program. So those are our recommendations and I'll take any questions or comments.
Thanks Marvin. Appreciate the presentation. I have a question about the youth certificate, the youth group certification. So most of that, that you're talking about is like for sports, correct? So what about organizations like Girl Scouts? Because I remember having a Girl Scout troop myself over at Highland Park. And I think when we were there, we were charged a flat fee. So can you just explain that again? Because I know that once the buildings open back up, people are looking to use the schools for those types of activities. And I just wanted to ask about that. And then I wanted to ask a second question about the birthday parties. I heard you given an explanation for why all the other programs were recommended to be discontinued. And I was curious about the birthday parties.
Okay, so youth group for the policy is a youth recreation, recreational athletic groups organized by the adults. So that's defined by the, actually the policy. So if you want us to actually expand the definition of the youth group, we're willing to entertain that. Yes. Craig, did you want to say something? Oh. Sorry. So should I repeat that? Okay, so I'll repeat. The youth group by definition by the policy is a youth recreational athletic group organized by and sponsored by an adult. So that's the definition in the, in the policy. So if you want us to expand the definition of what youth group is, we will change that. We will make the adjustment to the, to the policy, I mean, to the process.
Yeah, I definitely would like to see it expanded because I know the Boy Scouts, well, they call them the Scouts now, also for historically have rented the buildings for scouting events and, and meetings. And there really is no other place for youth groups to meet inside throughout all of Upper Darby except for places of worship and they are getting harder and harder to access.
Sure.
For president. Or just real quick on slide two, if you can go back to that. Yeah, you talk about the insurance certificate where youth groups have to provide that. But there's also an option in Facilitron for you to pay for insurance. So you didn't mention that. I think it's important.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so youth group usually have their own insurance, but they have an option to purchase that through Facilitron. Correct.
Thank you.
Snorrs. Thank you, Mr. Fields. Yes, I have two things. My first is a question about this slide. My first is a question about this slide, youth group certification. And in particular, the required information. The first item is organization type and tax ID. Is it required for youth groups to have a, a tax ID? Meaning essentially I am thinking be a, a nonprofit registered with the IRS to rent our facilities in that I can see the possibility where someone, you know, some new group starting up may not yet, you know, be large enough to be an officially recognized nonprofit and have a tax ID. That's my first question. I'll let you address that, then I have another item.
Yeah, the question about the nonprofit organization. The board information, the board policy says that the building and facilities of youth facilities shall be available for functions that are public, civic and nonprofit in nature.
Okay.
And a lot of our organizations are nonprofit organization. They usually provide the tax information.
Okay. So the, the, the policy though doesn't state that we only allow use of facilities by, if I should say officially chartered nonprofit organizations.
You are correct. You are correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then my, my second item is, as you noted in your presentation, it's been about a year since we implemented Facilitron. And I appreciate the administration taking the initiative and, and preparing and giving this presentation today. And it's good to see you reviewing how things are going with an eye towards making things better. But I'd also like to mention it's been a little over a year since we updated Policy 707, the use of facilities policy and was just discussed. There's an opportunity to update the policy to make youth rates more universal. In reviewing the policy before this meeting, I noticed there were some areas that could potentially be updated like the, the policy currently states that a, a use of facilities application can be obtained from district administration. And given that we're now all electronic, I don't know if we even have paper applications anymore. So that's just one little thing I noticed that might benefit from an update. So if administration has any suggestions or recommendations for the, for how the policy might be tweaked, the board would welcome those and take them under consideration. Thank you.
Director Neal has a question and then Director Hag.
Thank you, Director Fields. I have a question regarding the grass fields versus the turf fields. As you know, we are updating the facilities and we are converting grass fields to turf fields, which would have an impact on the programs that currently use those at Beverly Hills and Drexel Hill. Is there any discussion in assisting those organizations with some short-term adjustments in the, the charges? Or at least, you know, having some equity where, you know, certain sports like all of our baseball fields are grass. So technically they, there would not be any charge due to that sport where other sports such as football would be playing on turf fields. So would there be any leeway for the district to offer reductions in the charge? So would there be any leeway for the district to offer reductions in the charge?
So as we move forward, building the new turf fields at the middle school, we had discussed evaluating those two fields a little bit different than the high school. The high school's field and specifically the turf and track were both done to a very, very high standard. The turf, if you remember, was actually, it's the same turf that's on Gillette Stadium for the New England Patriots. It's the same material, it's the same quality turf. And our track is an Olympic, Olympic track mondo surface. So we were really, you know, that was our first synthetic field and track that we were trying very hard. We want to make sure we are protecting our asset. It also requires grooming. The field itself actually requires a, you know, semi, you know, bi-weekly grooming. We go out and you actually have to till the field. So when we moved to the middle school fields, we are not doing them to the, to the highest standard like we did the high school. So as we move into that, we will consider how we are going to allow the community to use those fields. As everybody knows specifically Beverly Hills, that front field is used almost every night. That is not a use of facilities request, that's just community use. That's something that, you know, we are keenly aware of and we know will likely continue. We encourage the use of the fields in those two satellite locations. Whereas the high school is typically gated off at night and you do need an actual permit to get on that field. So the middle school fields will be handled slightly different, but we're not quite there yet. We're still, you know, going through all the specking out of the projects. And I think Dr. McGary wants to jump in.
Yeah, David, I mean, I mean, we, it was funny, I was walking into the township meeting the other night because there was also that E. Cole Road ordinance in vacating. I was walking with the engineer, we happened to park in the same parking lot that was coming to attend that meeting, who's working on the, both the Beverly Hills and Drexel Hill engineering of those fields. Yeah, we were talking about this concept. I was kicking around the idea of what other fields get overly used here. You know, on the back of this campus alone, if you were to take a Google Earth of what it looks like, it's a dirt patch. The swamp on the softball field, the baseball field. So you, you might not like this response I'm going to give long-term, but I think we got to really consider the long-term change of a lot of the facilities here that become that way. So that there is not an issue of not being able to play on them. And football, just so we're all clear, the football field here at the high school is used by the band as much as it is used by the football team, as much as it is used by field hockey and lacrosse and soccer. So all of those youth rates, eventually what we're trying to create here are other fundraising opportunities too. We're, we're kicking around the idea, Craig and I the other day driving to a township meeting, that we could host soccer events, lacrosse events as fundraising events and host those events here on all three campuses. High school maybe being the final tournament game. So there's a lot of fundraising events to get us to where we need to and offset some of the issues and the costs related to using the grass fields versus the turf fields for those youth organizations that come into play. I'm a baseball guy, so I'm definitely where you are about using the grass fields. The issue, I would argue, is that our grass fields are in such bad shape and there has been little upkeep on them because they're in constant use. And so we need to really reevaluate. The little flip side of what you're talking about, Dave, is the fact that they're actually playing on fields that are not nearly as in good a condition as the other, as the other athletic complexes. So we have to get to that direction. We're talking about a grass complex, a grass seeding program too, until we can get there. But we'll, we'll talk about how we can vary the rates appropriately for those, those youth programs too.
Thank you. And regarding the, the middle school fields, will one field be done first? Then move over to the other middle school? Or will both fields be done simultaneously?
The direction to the architect was that we wanted to complete the project at the same time. Yes, that was the direction.
Do you know like the time of year that would take place?
So we are hoping to start the construction in the spring of next year and with a goal of completing it before the school starts next year.
Okay. And then my last question is regards to the swimming pool. That's a resource that our district has that many districts do not. So what would be the district plan to utilize this pool, this resource moving forward if we're discontinuing these programs?
So I, we've had conversations as recently as, as yesterday here at the high school with the athletic department. Our athletic programs have actually taken to using the pool for recovery and training. So indoor training for track, indoor training for boys and girls track, recovery for that. Phys ed classes, believe it or not, want to get back into using the pool. There've been some problems over the years with getting access to the pool because of the upkeep of the pool. We've done some work on the pool, community using the pool so our kids can't do phys ed classes in the pool. As you can imagine, we don't have phys ed classes necessarily going into the pool during the week. Because of some of the community uses of the pool was a concern. In today's environment, different than when I was a kid here, swimming in the pool and there was a swimming lane with the community members and I would be in swim class here. You can't have that in today's world. So we are really gaining back the pool, trying to keep up the pool and then use it for our health and physical education classes here in the school district and for our athletic programs to help kids train in the off-season and recover in the off-season.
Okay, thank you. Director Fields?
Dr. Hag.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. I have a, I have a few questions, so I'll try not to, to take too long. But I first just want to echo what Vice President Curry said about, and others supported about expanding the definition of, of youth groups to include some of these other groups. And so it sounds like, I didn't, I guess I didn't quite get the answer to the question of, is it, is it a requirement that they have a tax ID? I understand you're saying most of them do and that makes sense.
They don't.
It's not a requirement?
It's not a requirement.
Okay, okay, great. So then my, my next question is about the residency requirements. Are we saying that all of the organizers have to be residents or some, one does? Or what, what are the requirements for the leaders and what are the requirements for the kids at this point?
So there are three requirements, I think. I think, I know there's a three requirements. Number one, you either have to be in, the organization has to be in the boundary of the Upper Darby School District. The sponsor has to be Upper Darby School District resident or the officer of the organization has to be Upper Darby School District resident.
So you said or, one of those.
Or, or, correct, correct.
Okay, so, okay, great. And then when you asked about their, you said they're, they'll be required to give a schedule and obviously that makes sense. But I also know that sometimes they have issues where, you know, they're part of a regional competition and the regional group hasn't given them the schedule and this. So do, do we have a sense of sort of how much detail is going to be required? Obviously, we need to know when they're using the field. And I think it sounds like the hourly rate conversion will make that simpler because if they have to ask for X hours, they have to ask, ask for X hours. I just wondered if there'd be some flexibility. Because I know sometimes they, the organization just literally can't get their schedule in time for various reasons.
Yeah, I think we are very flexible working with our youth groups. And Ms. Dunbar does a good job communicating with our youth groups on a regular basis, on a daily basis. So she's spending a lot of time actually in the Facilitron, organizing, negotiating, making comments about like their groups. So we're very flexible, I think, yeah.
A lot of times it'll make it to me with, with these guys. And so we'll look at the calendar and get approvals and then retroactively have the board approve it if we can fit it in. I think, you know, Marvin's not giving himself credit. He, he manages a lot of this and brings it up to me or to Craig to get approval, but it's already handled. And so then we work with the communities to have retroactive, like, one of the latest ones that's coming up is the controversial of a bonfire on Aronomic and local youth groups who usually do it and somebody else who's doing it. Like, these are the things that we're dealing with every day that we're managing. And so the timing of this is important simply because of the use of our facilities, you know? And we got to look at that because as we're doing these projects, this high school can't, it's, it's used all day, all summer long. And it backs us up into getting the schools clean and the teachers come back and they feel like the school wasn't clean. There's a lot of pieces to that. And to the, to the residency piece, this summer, I'm not going to name names, but there was some programming trying to take place on our school facilities. And we were going back and forth with, are you a resident, are you a not a resident? It became somewhat controversial. But we're also trying to defend the taxpayers of this community who are putting money into these facilities and outside non-district residents coming in. We want to be able to make sure that there's a respectful use of our facilities after putting the money into it. And the idea, I think, for the residency is if you're a resident here, you're going to take things much more seriously when you use these facilities versus some outside organizations who claim they have a connection to the residents and they don't. And then we're chasing our tails, like, who are we going to go to if things don't go well?
No, I, I mean, I completely hear and support what you're saying, Dr. McGary. My question was really more just, I wanted to hear that there were sort of multiple ways to sort of show residency. I just think of, I know that so many of these groups are struggling to find leaders. And I would hate to think of a group that really did serve our kids and then they find a coach that lives in Springfield and it's like, oh, no, no. You know what I mean, like, right, right? And so, and so I wouldn't want to exclude a group that really was serving our kids that happened to have leaders who live just outside of our boundaries, that would not be.
Yeah, and so what we do with that is, is so you, as a coach, and you coach in this community, you will go to those parents and say, we want to hold a practice in one of the gyms. You're a resident, I'll be there to coach, you have to get the use of the. So we work with families on how, if your children are part of this program, you can apply for the permit and we'll be there to coach and do it, but you can get the facilities use.
And ju, and just remember, Marvin said there were three options, right? The or, the or, if the organization resides in the district, that covers you. So in the ca, in the example Dan just gave, where the coach may not live in the community, but the organization is based in the community, it's located in the community, that qualifies.
I was, I was very happy with, with Marvin's answer, just, just to be clear. So then just to clarify Mr. Neal's question, that, so are we anticipating then a lower hourly rate for the middle school turf fields than for the high school turf field? Then that's the expectation? Okay. And then, and then about the pool, you said, you said that the use is low, but I wasn't sure, like, about how many, how many people have memberships? And I don't know, right now, maybe the numbers are artificially low, but at the last point that people were using it, how many?
Before pandemic, we had about 315 members.
315?
Yes. And of that, I think we have about 300 Upper Darby School District residents and about 50 outside, the county residents.
I mean, to me, it makes no sense whatsoever to be letting community members using the pool during school hours. That I can't, that I can't fathom how that makes any sense. But it, I was curious to know how many angry, you know, emails we're going to get when we discontinue this. And that's maybe a little bit higher than I was hoping for, but it is what it is. And then the Saturday swimming lessons, is that, is that, that was an existing program that we're changing or it's brand new?
It's an existing program that we are taking over with our swim coach. It used to be ran by recreation department, but it's going to go to the swim coaches and they're going to use it as a fundraising event, yes.
Thank you.
Director Curry?
Yes, I just wanted to point a clarification about the residency. So I know that the residency is, that, that particular policy is there to protect. But I'm, I'm just thinking about the many organizations that don't fall into any of those spaces. Like, I know that one group that has been here, and I can't think of their name right now, but I know Dan, Dr. McGary has gone to their events. And they're based in Westchester, but they bring their program here in the summer and they've used Drexel Hill for many, many years. So I'm just wondering about those programs that want to serve Upper Darby, the Upper Darby community, but don't fall under any of those residencies. And then I was just curious again, Marvin, because I think the one question I asked about the birthday parties, I just want to know about that. Just because the birthday parties, I know a lot of people who've used this facility for their birthday party. So just want to know if that had dipped in, you know, in request and how the district plans to communicate, like Dr. Hag said, with the community, those members. And, you know, I was thinking what she said about use, the use during the day. But I think a lot of seniors were using it during the day. So just want to, you know, make sure, find out how you were planning on communicating that to the members that have been actively using the high school for a long time. Thank you.
Okay, a few things about the birthday party in the pool. The use of facilities should be used for public, civic and nonprofit in nature in general, cultural, educational, recreational, civic goods. That's number one. Number two, the usage of the pool party, based on what I, when I talked to the, the pool manager, was less than five in a year. So very infrequently used as a birthday parties. And we're talking about small children and we have a certain diaper requirement and we don't want to expose that elements to our pool and our students because our pool will be used, our students much more. And also we want to make our pools more available to our students. So there are multiple regions, but very infrequently used. I think that's a more, one of the major regions because we don't want to have a program going because a few people are using it. I don't know if that makes sense. Yeah.
The young men, women in charge, I, I was trying to think about, about what it is, but they, they've been here for a number of years. And that was a use for our youth extension of academic summer learning and programming. So it's really an extension of what we do as a school district for students. They have just received grant money to partner with us to provide those resources for kids. But a very good point, to Dr. Hag's point about those organizations, and they really go through me, through you guys, for helping our kids with summer programming and things like that. And those are the unique aspects that I, I know that you guys know this, I know we're doing this so the public is aware of it. We will always bring, any opportunities that come forward, they're going to benefit the kids in this community and the community overall. We'll bring forward to you those, those kinds of conversations to make sure that we can make sure the best is available for our kids.
Thank you for that, Dr. McGary. So if there is an organization that comes through one of us or asks a board member, hey, how do I do this? Will we still send them through, you know, Facilitron? And, or how would we get them? Because I, I know of a group right now who, they're not connected to Upper Darby, but they want to serve the Upper Darby community. So I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think all of you know by now, if you get ahold of one of us, you know, we'll, I would prefer to go to, go to me. We'll reach out to those individuals, set up a meeting and I'll make sure that I connect the individuals that need to be and need to know. And then from there, we have various outlets. Could this be one that we connect with the home and schools? And then the home and schools uses a vehicle for them to do something with families to get access to those kinds of things. So we, we have a lot of ways and connections to work with people and to communicate. So I think have them reach out to my office and we'll make the connections to, to navigate all of this. It's really, I think what we're talking about tonight more than anything is, a board member asked us to talk about youth rates and talk about this, we wanted to do it in a public forum. And we wanted to really establish for the public, when there is frustration potentially, when we're making these improvements, like the pool's an example. That pool was really not getting any of the improvements it needed to keep up and running. And it's an expensive undertaking to keep that pool up and running. And quite frankly, when, when we're looking at the amount of money we're putting out for it, we're trying to get, we're trying to get lifeguards. We've got to get lifeguards all day, we've got to get lifeguards for that. Who's going to schedule it? Who's going to make sure lifeguards are here? Who's going to pay them? Who's going to certify them? You know, there's a lot that goes into running a pool membership on top of running the school. So there's a lot of complicated parts to this that I think we're trying to show that we're thinking about our youth programs, we're thinking about access to our facilities, trying to keep longstanding traditions up and running and how we can navigate the current environment of today that we're in right now versus when this originally started, just how hard it is to find those resources and the costs.
Okay, I just wanted to remind everyone that this youth group certification is to make it easier for youth groups to say, I get, I qualify for the youth rate. That doesn't mean that they're not going to be able to still qualify for the youth rate. This is just to help make it a little bit easier.
Absolutely.
I, I think we've gone over and over this again. Programs like Young Men and Women in Charge, they come through the board for approval. So, you know, we're, we're going to make sure that we get people, you know, the access they need to, to the school district for the community members who are present. I know this has been a lengthy conversation, but we, we want, we have the best interest of the community at heart. We want to make sure that people are able to use the facility. So we're just trying to flesh it out. So thank you again for this great conversation tonight.
Can we get to the next presentation?
Yes, so next up is the safety and security update from Dr. McGary.
So I'm going to, I'm going to kick off by saying, I think the timing of this is important, but the timing of this is not a reaction to what's been going on here at the high school. This is something that we do every single year. We want to make sure that we tell the public, anyone who's new to our school district, anyone who's new on our board, that we are just reviewing the procedures that we have here in the school district. And as we know, Lou Gentile retired last year and Mark Banley, who has a background of working here locally as a, in law enforcement, Upper Darby Police Department. He also worked here in our attendance office and registration and as a security guard for us for a number of years, has been, you know, willing to take on the responsibility of being the head of our security here and safety in the school district. And he's certainly, you know, earning, earning his pay, keeping us safe. And we just had a meeting here in this room today with our chief of police and our chief of the fire department for Upper Darby, just reviewing the recent fire and the recent emergency plans that we have. We're going to be setting up a meeting with all the local, non-public schools to offer and extend a training that we go through and what our procedures are that I'm going to go through right now. And also talk about how in the event that there's an emergency, we may have to partner with each other for relocation, for evacuations. Just for emergency response, we're all in this together. So we're going to take the initiative as Upper Darby School District. We are going to reach out to all the local non-public schools. We're going to have a meeting here and a training. We're going to use our, the police department and the fire and our administration to walk through common language, what sister and brother schools we might have to have to relocate with each other and, and partner together to do that. And tonight I just wanted to quickly review kind of where we are. I touched the wrong computer. Let me close this one. We're going to just briefly go through what a lockout, lock-in and lockdown, those procedures that we have. They've changed a little bit over the years. We no longer do what is called a shelter in place. The language is now lockout, lock-in, lockdown. Active shooter and the active shooter language and the, and the training that will take place over the first 90 days of school. Just remind the public and the board members that may be newer here, we have a Dell Pass system. Every single school is outfitted with what is the Dell Pass system and we'll talk about that briefly. And then just communication, just a reminder of how important the communication is from in, within the district and external communication, and how we should respond in the event of an emergency here in, here in the school district. And so right out of the gate, Mark, if you want to jump in with me, what is a lockout? We're not going to read it for you word for word. We'll be here to just answer any questions. But there may be times in a school setting that we have to lock out any individual coming in for the school. Mark, anything you want to?
Correct. This could involve police activity in the area of the school. A pursuit of some kind, foot pursuit, even something as dangerous as a rabid animal, dog, something like that, where having the students and the staff outside the school presents a threat to the safety of the school.
So in, in these procedures, we're reviewing this language because it will also determine what type of instruction is going on in the building. What we learned over, to get to this point, a couple of years ago, we were in lockdown situations and students might be sitting in there and it could be an outside of school activity and their education was being interrupted. So in, in a lockout situation, students can still inside the building, go through what they need to go through and get their education versus locking down the school that we'll get to in a minute. You're locking down, you're in your classroom, you're remaining calm, you're remaining quiet and there really wouldn't be any kind of educational aspects taking place. And so now we'll move into what is a lock-in. We have had a couple of situations this year when we've had a lock-in in the school where we really take a, pay attention in particular who's coming in and out of the school. We don't necessarily shut down someone coming in and out of the school, but we are locking students into their current educational environments. They will progress through their education, keep their classes going, but we are keeping them safe within the school. Mark?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, this could be something along the line of an irate parent causing a disturbance in the main office. Some person unauthorized has made their way into the building. Or heaven forbid, a, a medical emergency where that the principal has decided that the students should not be exposed to in one of the common areas. So the classroom activities can continue. The staff and students just remain in their classroom or office, depending where they are, until the principal has decided that the situation has been cleared to their satisfaction.
Now lockdown is the most serious of all of these. Not that any of these are less serious as far as keeping students and staff safe, but when you're in a lockdown situation, this is one of the, of the three where a principal of a school cannot make a decision to come out of the incident. And Mark Manley, the head of our security, can't make the decision to come out of it. And the superintendent of schools cannot make the decision to get out of it. I was up here just recently and, and Dr. Manfree was here and we reviewed again. We debriefed over the most recent incident. When there's a lockdown, the principal, everybody locks down, we're in a, in a safe location. We, we will get to a communication device that we use. And then 911 is called, an announcement goes over the PA system that we are in a lockdown. The students should remain quiet, staff should remain quiet. We should try to move away from any window or door area to be seen. We're locking down the school. And you are not out of the lockdown until the police arrive on location and release us from the lockdown. They know the police are trained and I won't go through that right now, because I don't want to really, really reveal all those procedures for the public. But our police and our administration and our security are trained how to remove us from a lockdown. But police are in charge when they arrive on the scene in a lockdown and principals are not able to remove themselves out of a lockdown. Mark, anything you want to add to that?
No, that, that's correct. I mean, it's the most restrictive of the emergency responses that we have. The least restrictive being the lockout can be moved to a lock-in, depending on how that progresses. The lock-in can progress to a lockdown. You cannot go the other way, because the principals control the lockout and lock-in. And as Dr. McGary said, only the police can declare an end to the lockdown.
And, and that's why we've put the other two procedures in, to make sure that outside behaviors, and we've had some that we know that we can keep out of our schools, will not interrupt and cause much anymore trauma than kids already go through. When we call a lockdown, it's traumatic for students. And when you have buildings the size of ours, you could be in a lockdown situation for 45 minutes to an hour and a half to two hours. A couple of years ago, we had a serious situation here in the high school and it was, it was a long, a long lockdown. And we have to go door by door with keys. Once we get our security out and keys, we have to go down and release every single one of those students out of their classrooms, because you can't just unlock yourself. I can't knock up on door, door and say, Ed Brown, I know you're teaching physics here or, or computer science, it's Dr. McGary, it's me, you know, here's a secret password, unlock your door. They know that they can't unlock the door. Security and police will unlock that door to relieve you from the lockdown, lockdown situation. Active shooter, this is the training that we've done for a number of years on active shooter, shooter training, just so we know, all of the teachers that are hired in Upper Darby School District sit in this room and we provide a training for all new staff, building by building. And Mark, this year with all new teachers in this facility, we went through an active, we went through our training. It's also a video that's been put together and through our onboarding process, all new staff are trained as a requirement on, on these procedures that we're going through with you right now. We have active shooter training that we go through. We just met with the law enforcement today and again, the fire chief to talk about. I, I learned today that the Upper Darby Police Department has 33 new police officers. So we've talked about ways that we can get our police officers more familiar with our schools that are new. And so we'll be, we'll be partnering with the police to do some evening activities in our facilities when students are not on campus. They become more familiar with our facilities. They already have access to our floor plans, local law enforcement and the fire department. But we want to make sure that they know what the T building is and how to get to the T building and what it looks like in here. So we're going to be providing training and opportunities outside of the school day with local law enforcement and emergency responders to get familiar with our buildings, because they have 33 new police officers who, who need to know what that looks like. Mark, anything I'm missing on active shooter?
No, sir.
Some of the key aspects are the run, hide, fight. Obviously, the last part of that, that that does not make any parent happy or any adult happy, is obviously the last part, which is fight. But we want to be clear that as a last resort, there may be times that you do not want to be a passive target. So in classroom settings, if that were to happen and someone were to breach that classroom, and this has happened in Virginia Tech and other, other school unfortunate active shooter events, that we need to recognize that, that unfortunately, we could step up and save other lives by engaging and fighting back. Obviously, it's a last resort in our schools and it's not something we want to have happen, but we do train our staff and we make it clear that fighting is an option. Fighting back is an option. Do not just hide under a desk and be a passive, a passive target. That makes people feel uncomfortable, but the reality that what we have to deal with and face sometimes is that that could prevent the other loss of casualty or lives or delay so that emergency response can get there. Just some evacuation pieces, I think this is the most complicated part, Mark. And I know we, the latest fire incident that we had here at the high school really exposed a need to continue to practice these things. When you practice a fire drill and it's not a real emergency event or an active shooter event when it's a drill versus a real, you can be exposed. And we know that we had a fire set in the bathroom here recently. And when you're, when you have over almost 4,000 students emptying this building, it's a full parking lot, there's a lot of people involved here on this campus, as we just talked about our use of our facilities. It really, Kelly Simone, the principal of the school and Mark and the team did an excellent job here. But it was very difficult to get almost 4,000 human beings away from the building when a fire was happening. And so we talked about, you know, not only evacuating the building, but talking to police about, you know, we really need to consider blocking off part, access to the high school campus down by Argyle Avenue and School Lane and maybe by Garrett Road and by Lansdowne Avenue. We may have to get kids out onto Lansdowne Avenue to get them off of the building. At a minimum, we can't have people coming up onto our campus either and we'll get that in a minute. But when you're this large and you have to evacuate your school, these are some of the things we talk about and we, and we, and we train on. In particular, a rallying point on and off site. We have had situations when we've done a lockdown drill, that students have done the right thing. They've gone down to Barkley Square, they've gone down to the Acme down in this, in this store or Perkins. And they communicate back and we rally and we go around and pick up those staff and those students in the event of a lockdown. If you're outside and the school district calls for a lockdown, students and staff know, run if you can. Run and we have a communication device where you can tell us where you are and we'll send reinforcement. But if it's an inside situation, we're locking down, run to the safest place and that's where evacuation comes into play. The more complicated piece for us in Upper Darby will be a, a rallying point or a relocation. There will be situations, and we almost did it a couple of years ago here at the high school, because we were in lockdown for so long and so many people showed up on our campus, which changed our communication that I'll get to in a moment, that we may have to call Drexel Hill Middle School to close early and shut down the roads so that we can relocate families and their students as a pickup point at Drexel Hill Middle School or Beverly Hills Middle School. Because if there's a God forbid an event that's here, you're not going to relocate families on the same campus as the emergency is taking place. And so we are planning these things and we talk about these things pretty regularly. We meet and we talk about it. And that's why we want to meet with other parochial schools, because they may be in a situation where they have to use one of our facilities to relocate and partner and talk about that training. But taking attendance is important. We utilize an app, the school district, again, forward thinking, thanks to this board, using the safety grants that we've been awarded over the last couple of years. We have an app called Crisis Go. It sounds, it sends a very loud alert. And I think Board President Brown, you've heard it. I think Dr. Heg, you've heard it in a meeting. And it alerts us. I want to give compliments to the high school. They, they've used it unbelievably well, where they can communicate with their staff. So all the staff have it on a computer or on their phone. We're also using with parents now, this, this latest emergency, because we've pushed it out to families having access to Crisis Go. They can get communications from us through Crisis Go. We've shared this with all of the captains in the police department, the chiefs of police. They all have access to our app, Crisis Go, so they get the communications. There's the internal staff communication. Ms. Christine Kelly is our director of curriculum instruction. But in an emergency situation, she's the Crisis Go public communicator using Crisis Go. So she'll be communicating with parents and families using Crisis Go, as that Rhonda and I are communicating on the other public communications that are going on and getting ready for whatever release of information is there. There's also an administrative function where administration will be talking to the high school principal or the assistant principal, getting information from real time from the administrators that will keep it out of the eyes of the parents and maybe out of the eyes of the staff. But we can communicate, well, how's 101? How are the students? They also take attendance. All of the floor plans are visible to teachers and emergency responders and to us, they're not available to the public. But we also have the floor plans loaded into the app for emergency responders when they come to the campus through this, through this application. Anything you want to add, Mark, to the use of Crisis Go?
No, I don't have anything else.
All right. Dell Pass, you want to explain Dell Pass, Mark?
Yes, sir. That is the Delaware County Police Alert the School Safety. It is a, for lack of a better term, a panic button that is installed by the county in the main office of every school building in our district and I imagine every main office throughout the county. It is directly wired to the 911 Emergency Center. And the understanding has always been that it is a life or death button. It has to be a, a matter of somebody's under threat of death, serious bodily harm. It's not meant for the angry parent in the office. A fight among students or staff, it's, it's the, it's the button that's going to bring most of the county to Upper Darby. It is a big red button. There's no mistaking it when it's seen in the office. It's also protected by a shield to try and hold off any of the accidents that's going to come with something of that nature. Once it's activated, and it can be activated by anybody who deems it necessary, but they're going to have a lot of questions to answer once that button is pushed. And it goes directly to the 911 center. And the 911 center has access to the audio, whatever's going on in that office. They can hear everything that's going on there and then relay that to the responding officers to give them a better idea what, what's happening. It, it's only one way, there's no conversation, but they still will get a better idea knowing from what they hear. So again, it's a big red button, looks, I guess an octagon, looks like a, you know, many stop sign. And every office person and staff member is shown and directed to where that can be found.
Communication, and if Ms. Buford wanted to jump in here, Mark, you certainly can. I think communication is one of the, the most vital aspects of what we're doing during these emergency situations. Early on, obviously, we have students who communicate much more frequently with their parents and so we monitor what's going on on social media. We know that our students are going to communicate. We, I believe, communicate as quickly and as rapidly as is possible in these situations, giving as much real information as we can. We're also balancing the fact that there could be a crime committed. So we don't want to also give information that could interrupt an investigation potentially or what could happen moving forward. But these are the devices that we use to communicate. You will, you will receive information through a parent link system, usually via email or a phone call. Our Crisis Go app is another tool that we have, an app that any parent can subscribe to. We have it with our teachers, we have it with our administrators, we have it with our local law enforcement, emergency responders. That puts us into an emergency situation. The most recent emergency lockdown at the high school was pushed by a teacher. Teacher hit the, hit the Crisis Go app and put us into that emergency situation, which we've trained people to do. When in doubt, safety first and we'll talk about debriefing after it. After every one of these incidents, we hold an administrative debrief. We also debrief with local emergency responders to see what else we could have done better on our end. And we, we, we talk about it, we implement it for the next time. We talk about it with faculty, we talk about it with staff. And our goal is to, is to keep safety at the forefront of everything we do. Social media, Ms. Buford and Jason Taylor do a great job of navigating social media. If God forbid, Rhonda took a vacation day and Jason took a vacation day. Christine Kelly and Wendy Elgart are the backups for the communication on social media. So we have backups to the backups in all of these roles. If not, if not, if I'm not around, there's a second in command and a third in command and they all know what their roles are. If there's an emergency button that's hit, right now, the District Incident Command Center takes place in the superintendent's office. If you can get there, there have been times when Mark is at the high school or Rhonda's been at the high school or Greg's had a lockdown at the high school and we all step up and play the different roles. We communicate with the board, we communicate with the public. But each person has a specific role and they're trained to do their role. And we practice each of those roles to be ready if there's an emergency situation. And obviously the district website. One of the key factors to this communication that we learned three years ago is that we put it out, and I know originally it frustrated some parents, but I want to applaud our public and our parents recently compared to where we were three years ago. At the bottom of our communications, we will specifically say, please do not call us and do not show up on campus. Because if you start calling us, you'll flood our, our phones and we can't answer them, especially if we have an emergency going on. And we have to allow our police and emergency responders to go through their process to make sure we're as safe as possible to get us into a situation where we can communicate even more effectively. A couple of years ago, we had a, a threat of a gun on campus and this campus was flooded by hundreds of parents and families. And at the same time, we were still in the lockdown, we had people on the campus and the press was already on the campus. So we, just as recently as today, to remind our local emergency responders, I'm asking them to shut that off, create a wall, so that we, we are not allowing that kind of attention onto our campus. So we allow our emergency responders to do what they need to do to get us out of it as safely, as quickly as possible. So we've communicated very clearly, don't call us, we'll call you and don't show up. And I have to say, our community has responded beautifully to the last several incidents that we've had as far as meeting those expectations. So I apologize if it came across originally as rude. We were not trying to be rude, we were trying to establish clear boundaries in an emergency situation. Mark and then Rhonda, Mark, anything you want to add to that?
No, sir.
Rhonda?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that again, to echo exactly what you said, it makes it easier for us to do the, the job that we have. this easier for us to do the job that we have to do, and the focus on safety for our students, which is number one. I just want to also clarify that for us, for Dan and myself, as we are relaying information to the public, it is very important that we are giving it to you as quickly as possible and as accurately as possible. So you will receive as many updates as needed. We do have a communication strategy, which is several pages long, which lay out how often we want to communicate. Sometimes we'll see some comments, because we do watch Jason and I on social media, and people seem to be frustrated with the fact that they feel like we're not giving them enough information. Like Dr. McGary said, sometimes there's an investigation, we don't want to step on the toes of professionals who do police work and fire prevention, we don't want to step on their toes, we don't know what it will become. Also, we don't share information that we cannot verify. So an update will only include what we know for sure and what we are allowed to share, and we will continue to do that. I do hope that everyone is pleased with the fact that, and I think that's evident by the fact that they don't feel that they have to come to the school, that they're getting enough information as quickly as possible. And Dr. McGary really thought it was important at the end of an incident to tell people post-incident everything that we can share and provide as synopsis. And we're also very transparent when it comes to the media. If people want to follow up, they have additional questions, there's information that they're seeking, Dr. McGary will interview with the public. So that's our formula, we will continue to use it. If you have feedback, continue to send it to Dr. McGary and myself, we're here to help.
Open for questions or comments.
Dr. Neal?
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Now, you had mentioned different types of persons that can access the Crisis Go app, for instance, parents. Would community members that reside next to a school building be able to access that, and would there be any plan to do so? Like, if they have children playing out in their backyard, and there was an active shooter, they wanted to get those kids inside, would they be aware of what's going on at that local school?
No, we're not at a point where we want to extend ourselves to that level. I think that would be, has some risky aspects to it. I think our number-one priority, and I appreciate what you're saying, it's thoughtful, but right now, our really, our primary focus is to keep our parents of the children in our schools informed, and our staff. And then, I really believe that the surrounding neighbors and community to Rhonda's, Ms. Buford's point, we have an MOU with our local law enforcement, and today, we talked about, maybe we need, with our fire department, about communication together so we're on the same page. Needless to say, we will communicate to the broader spectrum jointly when necessary and communicate it that way, but right now, we're not going to give that level of access just to every single member of the community right now. Good point, but we're not there yet. All right, thank you for your response.
Can I just add something, too? We do welcome people to subscribe to our social media. It is literally seconds behind Crisis Go.
Yes, I just had a quick question, it might not be appropriate for this particular presentation, but it goes without saying that every time that the district has to engage in this sort of thing, it's a very, it can potentially be a very traumatic experience for everyone involved, most especially our young people who have to learn here, our staff that work here, and the families that obviously have loved ones associated with these buildings. So my ultimate question is specifically for, well, actually for anyone, teachers, students, or family members who might have some emotional related issues when dealing with a lockdown, a lock, whatever that is, what supports are available to those who need that kind of assistance getting through that kind of experience?
Yeah, Damian, I appreciate that. Maybe one of the things we could do moving forward out of People's Services is just to reiterate again, the level of services that go into it. And I apologize, I think Mark did have a couple of slides like that in here about some of the responses, and we didn't include them in there tonight, and I apologize to you, Mark, for that. I wanted to try to keep this on, you know, just the bread and butter of the emergency pieces, but you're right. I mean, the response that we have, just so you know, depending on the severity of a situation, to unfortunate student self-harm incident, all the way to a fire in the bathroom set by a student, to a lockdown, we have lesson plans, we have, we are prepared-trained, which is a model that the IU has adopted, where I am trained, Mark is going to go through the training, Dr. Manfree is trained, we have trained the trainers here, we've taken it that seriously, how to respond pre and post. We also have what is called threat assessments now under the state law that we have to follow. So when a fire is set in the bathroom, we now have to look into what threat assessment could there be long-term with a student that is involved in that, and the care that that student might need. So in every one of these situations, it's the person involved and those receiving it, what lesson planning, what trauma-informed care can we bring? And so right away, Mrs. Simone created a video. I did my part by setting the tone on a larger scale, and then we met with the high school administration right away, and they established how to communicate with the students and staff, and Mrs. Simone created her video. Jill Palladino at the high school, who plays as an assistant principal, she also wears the hat of behavior PBIS and positive support, she started to create lesson plans. So right away on Monday, we had lesson planning, talking about how to feel safe, how to engage appropriately. There was a lesson plan again today in the building, and how to talk to each other and be engaging with each other. So if there's a real emergency situation, we have had times here where we have this entire office set up, this entire room set up with guidance counselors. There have been times, Damian, when we had a lockdown for an hour and a half or two that I called the county, and other resources came in with guidance counselors to provide support to students, to parents. Over spring break, we had an unfortunate student situation, we had a passing of a student, and over spring break, we called each other all in, and we had those levels of support. So it goes from dealing with the incident and the investigation to quickly providing even the person who did something wrong, the supports that they need, and the victim's supports, the staff's supports, the staff follow-through, the communication, you name it, we're in the business of having to provide all of those resources. What I think we lose sight of sometimes is the support that the people who do these jobs every day need. You know, you look at a Kelly Simone who's exhausted, or a Greg Manfree, you know, or Mark. It's traumatizing, too, that you're in these and constantly getting in these discussions, these conversations. So my job is also to stop and think about, okay, how do I support these folks who do it all day, every day? Sometimes I think we forget about, they're not robots, and they need supports, too. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Damian. It runs the gamut of the supports and the needs, and the Prepare model is a model that we've been trained under, that really provides a lot of those supports for us.
If there's no other questions, I just want to say, Dr. McGary, to Kelly Simone and everybody else, I don't forget, I don't forget. So you guys, they're dealing with it face-to-face every day, hearing my thoughts a lot. At this time, are there any public comments? Please, yeah, come up to the microphones, give your name and address. Keep in mind, it has to be related to the presentations.
Can you hear me? Okay, this might be a general...
Name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sahida Mayfield, 249 La Carre Drive, Lansdowne, Pennsylvania, 19050. Okay, so I've mentioned this before, virtually at board meetings, safety. I've really been concerned specifically, and I've been kind of monitoring this, like, throughout the school years, the safety of children who are walking home. So there were a few incidents with my daughter, and I had to pick her up a few times, and I've noticed over the years, because I've had previous daughters go to Beverly Hills, and there are a lot of children that go to this school. And I'm specifically concerned about the children who are walking home. And I noticed that, like, boys sometimes mess with girls, sometimes it's playful, sometimes it's really not. I did see a police presence where the laundromat and the 7-Eleven is. Over the last few weeks, I've seen one or two police cars, so that was nice to see. But my concern is, I don't know the name of the street, but it's at the end of the driveway for the school, all the way up to Marshall Road. There's no, there's no presence of a crossing guard, there is a street there, I don't know if maybe they can have an extra crossing guard, or maybe where that little depot is for SEPTA around that area, like, kids tend to do things that are not favorable. And I've been, like, watching it, you know, because my daughter has been telling me some things that have been going on. And I did talk to Dr. McGary about some of the hotspots where some things are, that were going on. But that's been a concern, because I have five children who went to that school, and I have one that currently goes there. And she's a female, she's kind of small, and I witnessed it, I picked her up from school the other day, and the little boy didn't see me, he was, like, coming towards her. So it's just the safety of the walkers, like, how can we better support the children who walk home from school? You know, and I know that, you know, there's things being done, putting in place hall monitors in the school, you know, more of a presence, you know, to help the children who are walking home, because there's things that happen in the school, like fighting, there's some hotspots, you know. I didn't see as much with the high school this year, you know, because I talked to my daughter who goes to the high school, but I'm very concerned with Beverly Hills Middle School, that stretch. I don't know that road, what that street is called, the intersection, but there's a lot going on, there's a lot of kids that go to that school sometimes. I don't know if all these students go to the school, I know some of them do, but I just want my daughter and all the children who walk home to be safe.
So Ms. Mayfield, I haven't seen you in a while, we've talked on the phone, and I know you were a good student, and you're an educator. I think that's important for people to know, that you have a vested interest in education, because you are an educator.
Yes.
I think, you know, my recent communications, and I've had these conversations over the hotspots with you, we've definitely shared those hotspots with our crossing guards, our local, Mark has shared them with the police, our principals are aware. I know the area very well, I was the principal of Bywood Elementary School, so I know exactly what that's like when 1,600 students are released from Beverly Hills, and then another 700 students are released from Bywood. That area is, as you call it, a hotspot, and it's always been a very stressful period of time managing those behaviors. What we're recently stumbling upon, and I want this message to be clear, because you said you're not necessarily sure if they're students, I don't want to steal your words, but I believe that you said that, correct?
Yeah, and there's been times where my daughters had interaction with other children of a similar age, I'm not really sure what school they're coming from, or if they even were children.
Correct. So we've had interactions as recently as this past Friday, dismissal time at Beverly Hills Middle School, where there are adults, 19, 20, 21-year-olds coming down, their cousins, their relatives are coming from other neighborhoods, and so we've got to be careful, too, not to extend ourselves off of our school campus where we really don't necessarily, can't get involved in where police babies should get involved, and overextend ourselves. So we're working with law enforcement there. I definitely agree with you, there are times after school, in that area in particular, I would say it's probably one of the number-one areas of concern at dismissal time in the school community, is when Beverly Hills lets out in that community. We'll look into the crossing guard aspect, but what I really want to emphasize is the community stepping up with each other and engaging. Bywood's great, because a lot of the parents come, and they walk home with their students. Beverly Hills in that area, it's not necessarily just Beverly Hills Middle School students, there are parents and adults, and adults that are not even in our residence that come into that area and engage in unfortunate behaviors. And so we're working on that, we'll continue to work on that with law enforcement.
And there's also, like, a park on the right-hand side, so that was a little bit of concern. And I know there was some fighting going on in that area, too. But there's been fighting, there's been some incidents, but not as much as normally, but I notice there's not a high presence of adults in that area. It's mostly, it's just students, a lot of students.
And we just have to work with our community of joining forces about being a presence out there, that was my communication, wasn't, we're going to get out to the home and schools and talk about, you know, rallying together, building a community presence, you know, simple things like proper lighting in an area, you know, community presence in an area, safe walks to homes to school. One of the things that we're working on, and we haven't got a chance to meet with kids about it yet, or develop the curriculum, and hopefully this board won't think it's too outlandish, but when I was a little kid, you had an orange badge, and mine never really necessarily left the rubber band it was in, but you were a safety. And one of the things we need to talk about is creating student empowerment, and I've talked to Dr. Manfree in the high school and to Mark about, you know, our kids want to be involved. Our kids, this past couple of days, about drawing a line in the sand, about how important school is, kids are stepping up and they want it to be safe. And so we can get kids who, in some ways, can be a presence to redirect students safely walking home from school, maybe close to that campus, talking about instituting some kind of safety program and training program here in the school district. We're looking into ways that our youth can be involved in saying that we don't do this here in our community, and being eyes and ears, and being a support as well.
Okay, thank you. And I was just concerned also because it's getting dark earlier, and I know some kids, you know, do sports, and they don't necessarily take the bus. So my children have done sports in the past, I'd usually would pick them up, but all children don't have that, you know, parents, you know, have different schedules, they work, they go to school. So I just want the children to be safe. I see a lot of things that really I don't feel comfortable with, and, you know, I just want everybody's children to be safe going home.
Well, thank you, so do we, and, you know, your job is to be an advocate like you are, and keep on contacting me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sherbrooke Boulevard. Are there any comments online?
There are no comments from the email or the phone number, just provided.
All right, thank you very much. I just have one question, if the board will indulge me, from the first presentation, the removal of E. Col, right? So that change affects Garrett in a way, right? And I just wanted to make sure the public knew about it. Go ahead.
Yeah, so from a safety perspective, Marvin was, I guess, celebrating this was one of the minor requests on that project, is there really is inappropriate school hazard flashing out there. So what the, one of the comments and feedback that we got on the vacating of E. Col Road and the field that's going in there, is that we would communicate back, I'm communicating back, that just popped in my head, sorry, not communicate back, because I'm worried about these microphones, sorry. It was, it was, there'd be a flashing light in that area that's a school zone. So safer driving, safer learning of driving in that area will definitely be an aspect that's improved by the new field going in, and vacating E. Col Road, there'll be a new school zone flashing.
Five months.
What's that?
You know, about five months, it's going to be installed.
Yeah, five months.
Great, that's great. I mean, it's never had it, right? And if you've ever driven down, they don't care if it's a school there, or a trolley stop, or anything, they just go. So that's great.
And Marvin said if he's not here in five months, we're going to get some light bulbs and put him out as like a flashing.
I'm looking forward to it. That's fantastic. All right, if there's no more comments, and if there's no more questions from the board, Mr. Rogers, will you review the agenda items presented this evening?
Sure. So we had three agenda items, the first was the capital project update, which is informational. The second is the update and recommendations for the use of facilities, which would require board action. And before I ask the board if they'd like to move it forward, I just want to specifically point out that the reason why we're asking for board action, although this is tied directly to Policy 707, which would go through a different approval process if you were to change a policy. In Policy 707, it states that building use would be, the fees shall be charged based on the school district's expenses in accordance with this schedule adopted by the board. So in the board language, it's actually referencing 707 AR3, which is the fee schedule. So we felt the need to, although we normally do not require board approval for an administrative regulation, in this case, the policy's pointing to that schedule. So that's what we're really asking the board to move forward, are the recommendations associated with the changes to that fee schedule. And what we would do, if the board would like, is willing to move it forward, is we'll put it into the finance and budget report for the next board meeting, and have the actual new schedule, AR, 707 AR3 included at the next board meeting. So at this time, I'd ask if the board's willing to move forward with those changes.
Can I ask a question? I just realized that I had this question before, and then I never actually got it all the way out, that, so Ms. Curry had brought up the idea of Girl Scouts and other groups, and what I just wondered was, are there possibly more facilities that should not have a charge for youth groups if we do want to support groups like the Girl Scouts? So that, you know, Girl Scouts would have to pay for a classroom, but not pay for a gymnasium, but what if they really want a classroom anyway? Sorry, we don't, I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, so we have to, the fees that we wanted to waive were specific to grass fields. Currently, there's a charge for the field, it works out to about 42 cents an hour, and there's no real, the administrative cost for processing just the payment alone costs us more than actually picking up the fees. So all youth groups would still have to, when they have the fee waived, the youth group has a gym waived, they're then, they will then incur the cost that's the pass-through, any kind of employee cost that comes through. But if we were to expand the language that was discussed tonight about youth groups versus a Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, that would require policy change. youth groups versus a uh Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, that would require policy change, which obviously goes through, you know, if you were to elaborate on elaborate on youth groups, right? Right now, it's youth recreational athletic groups specifically, youth athletic groups. So if that's a a direction the board wants to go in, Mr. Desner, as I'm sure we'll bring it toward uh forward for a policy change. But for this specific presentation, we were not recommending changes to policy. We're following the policy and we're trying to make it so that the fee schedule actually aligns better with the policy and is more transparent. There are fees that have been charged in the past for a building custodian, but they're not on the fee schedule, right? We know what those charges are. Um and I'd say moving forward, if those fees were to change, you know, cost of living goes up or the or the rates go up, we would then bring it back again, and it'd be a much more straightforward presentation at that point. Um but we would ask for the the schedule to be changed. Typically, those A R A Rs, administrative regulations, do not go to the board for approval. It's how we interpret your policy and implement them district wide. So in this case, just that's why I've read that one line, that one specific line is why we're really here to ask for the board's approval in changing that schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Yeah, do we, does the board agree to move that one piece forward?
Yes.
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 Fantastic.
Thank you. And the final item was the safety and security update, which Dr. McGarry and Mr. Uh and Mark also uh presented an update on the implementation at Crisis Go and it and reviewed our uh policies and procedures surrounding safety and security. And that was it for tonight.
All right. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, will take five minutes before we start Education and People Services. Welcome back to the Education and People Services Committee in-person and virtual meeting. The meeting of the Education and People Services Committee will please come to order. Pursuant to the Sunshine Act as amended by Act sixty-five of twenty twenty-one, the district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. As provided in Robert's Rules of Order, a motion is in order to approve the that agendas for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments to offer.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I will now turn over the Education and People Services Committee agenda to co-chair, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. Before we um go through the agenda items, Dr. McGary, would you be able to just um go over how to participate in this meeting if you're attending virtually?
Yes, as we we started earlier, there is a link on our district website. Uh if you go to school board and you hit the plus sign, you could take you to board docs. All the agenda items are available to the public, the presentations are made available to the public. Uh during the pandemic, we've also moved to live streaming and allowing public access and and the board has passed a a policy that we will continue both in-person and virtual participation in our board meetings. Um you can participate by coming to a board meeting, um and uh obviously stating your name and your address at the microphone. We did have some audience members with us earlier this evening, unfortunately, I guess the second part of the show was not as entertaining. Um but you would come to a board meeting and you would give your name, your address, and you would uh reference the specific agenda item you'd like to comment on or question. And during a committee meeting, we would obviously give uh feedback on those questions, uh because that's the, this is the meeting that would would take place. Um if you're participating virtually, there'll be a link and you can attend watching it on YouTube, and you can send in your comments or questions, one of two ways, by phoning in at six one zero seven eight nine seven two zero zero extension two thousand, um or you could email to committee questions at upperdrbsd.org. If you phone it in or you send an email, please provide us your name, your address, um and the specific agenda item uh you'd like to comment or question on this evening, and we will do our best to answer those questions and become part of the record as well. Um I hope I I hope I covered it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Okay, Ms. Kelly, if you could please um start with an overview of the agenda items, then you can just start with agenda item number one. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. Um tonight we have two um agenda items, both will require board action. The first one is the Administrator Action Research Topics, and then the second one is our one policy, um which is policy two oh four for attendance, both requiring board action. So as we transition into the first agenda item, which is um action research, um this evening I'll be presenting the action research topics for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um this annual presentation is delivered at the beginning of each school year. Um and traditionally, the action research topics were selected by the administrative team, um and in which they identify an area that's a challenge um for the school district or um the individual schools. And from there, the teams would work collaboratively um to research ways to improve that area that they saw was a concern, and they would do research and collect data and work through that process. This year, our proposed topics, um like I said, which would require board action, um are based on um the work conducted by the comprehensive planning team that was conducted from um right before the shutdown in January all the way through up until June of this this school year. So um and just to remind the audience um as well, the comprehensive plan is available on our district website um under the curriculum and instruction page just for a reference if anyone needs it. So the topics that you'll see tonight may look very familiar as we built the topics around the work that was started by the comprehensive planning team and the challenges that were identified. Um and we will continue now with these teams to collect data, analyze the latest research in these areas, and make additional recommendations throughout the year. So why action research? So a few different reasons as to why. Um the first reason being, um it's part of the evaluation system, it's part of the, it's one component of the evaluation system for both teachers as well as principals or those that are classified or in a certain area that have to do con um action research for as part of their evaluation system. The evaluation system, um which we call, which is referred to as Act thirteen, has this component embedded into it as a professional responsibility that people are looking or the teachers in this group, the professionals in this group are evaluated based on their work. The second thing is it it's to improve practice. It's people in the field looking at certain things that are affecting their um practices, affecting their um work that's done in their schools, and they look to the data and ways to improve the data, and then they look for ways that professional development could be brought in, how it affects the budget, and they tie in all of those pieces um to make any recommendations. Um the third thing, like I mentioned earlier, was um the proposed topics um that have been aligned now to the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan has a few different pieces embedded in it um that we're looking at benchmark data, we are, or we're looking at the benchmarks that we set through the comprehensive plan, that we have a three-year goal to get to, and by taking small steps, we can reach year one's benchmark, year two benchmark, to get to our year three benchmark. And ultimately, what we want to do is get to the twenty thirty goal that is um established by the future-ready index and the data that is there. So there's a few different pieces, but like I said, you'll you'll notice some of the work has already been started in this year area. They'll be um around the areas of reading, math, social and emotional learning, graduation rate, all things that we have been talking about for months and months and months throughout our work with the comprehensive plan, as well as the pieces that we've been bringing forward to the board's attention. So the next four slides will outline um the nine administrative action research topics. So we have about fifty people that fall into the category of needing an action research um project as part of their evaluation system. So we divide those four fifty people up, or they divide themselves up really, we we survey them, we ask them where they would like to spend their time, what they would like to research, what they would like to collect their data on, and we divide, there's nine categories, so they fall into one of those nine categories based on their interests. So the the nine topics that you see in these next few slides will outline the work that they are going to concentrate on doing. The very first two that you see up on the slides um behind me are the ELA focus. So we will focus our work on ELA um in the area of professional development. We will also be evaluating and looking at how to um look at interventions, evidence-based interventions, and making sure that we have the ones that are helping our students the best make progress. Again, all tied to the comprehensive plan. The reason for the four out of thirteen schools in that first one, like I said, um part of the comprehensive plan is to get to a three-year measurable goal. So in order to get to your end goal, um the comprehensive plan has um small benchmarks that you meet in the middle. So the first piece being, four out of our thirteen schools will have training or um in this case, meet the student achievement data that needs to meet or exceed the student achievement data in year one. In year two, you'll see more schools. So by the end of that year three mark in the comprehensive plan, we are getting to more and more of the schools. So that is the trend. Again, that's all available throughout the comprehensive plan that is available on the district website. Similar to ELA, you'll see the next two, um which is um which are the three and four, which are paralleling in math. So again, the work that we have to do in math through professional development, as well as the work that we have to do through evidence-based research um of interventions, and how we can support our teachers and students through that work, through collecting data. Sorry. Um the next uh three here are all based on the social and emotional learning um for our students. We have um, we've had, have been talking about trauma-informed care and the uh the pieces that we could put in to trauma-informed care, what we could do to support our students. So we'll continue to analyze that data as well as bring in new research. There's constant improvements there and things that we can do as a school district, so this team will be looking at that as well. Um the same thing goes for restorative practices, as well as um a few months ago, we updated or we brought to the board's attention the new social and emotional learning uh or the curriculum K through twelve. So really investigating how that is supporting our students. So that would be the research that this team would look at, collecting data and what they see there, and then asking or recommending any changes through the evaluation process of things that that group feels we still need to do or still need to work on. So that would be the process for um five, six, and seven. The process stays the same for all of the, of course, action research groups, but the topics are going to change depending on what uh what principals are working on those groups. depending on what, what principals are working on those groups. Eight and nine are two, two more action research groups that would look at graduation rates and look at how to support and, how to support our high school students, as well as especially number eight, that dual enrollment or just the opportunities that students have and what path they're taking in to graduation. So really collecting the data and making sure that all students have that clear path to what, what they are doing through our graduation pathways and credit accumulation. Dual enrollment is all folding into that one area. So that action research is, is big. It's multifaceted. It has a few different areas that data would be collected. I know that a lot of the high school team is looking at concentrating their work in that area for number eight. So tonight, I'm going to be seeking approval for the nine action research topics that are up on the screen. Also, if, if approved, they would be approved at the October board meeting, and then our work could begin as a group. If not, we could go back and we can look at the plan and we can revise some wording if needed to make sure that we are hitting the areas that we want to look at as a team as well. So at this point, are there any questions about the presentation or the topics selected, or anything I can clarify?
Just for ease, I'm just going to like sort of look down the table. So I'm going to start on this side and work down. Okay, Mr. War Savage?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell. Excellent presentation, Ms. Kelly. I did have a question of clarity for the benefit of the public. Would you mind just going over briefly what verbiage such as climate and culture actually means and why it's important that Upper Darby School District focus on improving that?
Right. So when we're talking about climate and culture, we're talking about the safety of our students in the, in the building, how they feel when they're coming into our buildings, you know, how the, the ease of learning when they're coming in. So there's many different pieces that come into that. And that, that would be the team's responsibility on what else could we be doing to help, help the learning environment or help the students in these, in our learning environments?
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Could you clarify the, the four of the 13 schools one more time so I can get a better grasp?
Sure. So in part of the comprehensive plan, you have, there is a measurable goal set for the end of the third, the three years of the comp plan. So the comp plan is adopted from the 21 school year to the 24 school year. At the end of the 24 school year, you had to have a measurable goal. In, before meeting that measurable goal, that third-year measurable goal, you had to take small steps in order to reach the goal. That's what the plan asked for. So our small step, or our first step, was to have four out of the 13 schools meeting or exceeding the statewide average. In year two, that goal increased. And then by year three, that all, or I think it was nine out of the third, nine out of the 13, or nine out of the 14, or all would meet or exceed.
Okay.
So they took many steps in reaching the end game of that measurable goal in the 24 plan.
Okay. I'm not sure if I, I misheard earlier in the presentation, but I, I thought you mentioned that we would only be targeting a portion of the schools with professional development or the evidence-based interventions. Was that correct? Or we're targeting the entire district?
So the teams would be targeting the entire district. Our goal is to have four of them, in that case, reach that by putting these things in place that they would be reaching that goal.
Okay.
But we would be targeting all of the schools. Anything that we do, we put in place, when we ask for approval, it's for all of our schools.
Okay. That makes me feel better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on this end of the table? Okay, I'm going to start Gina Down. Anything? Mr. Brown? Anyone else? All right. I think we're good to move on to the next agenda item, the policy report. Mr. Neal, Mr. Des Noiers?
So there's only one policy under consideration this evening. It's Policy 204 Attendance. And as a reminder, this went through a first reading earlier this month, and will have to be approved at a second board meeting. The October board meeting before these changes will be implemented. And the changes are, can be summarized as follows. Policy 204 underwent significant change that was, received final approval from the board in August. And after those significant changes, it was discovered that a minor revision was needed in that we failed to eliminate some outdated language. So the change, the updates being considered tonight are simply corrections to major revisions done in August and are simply removing outdated language. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Des Noiers had to say?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And same thing again, if there's any concerns from the board on the updated policy language, I'm going to start over here. Anyone? And I'm going to go down the table this way. Anyone have any questions or concerns about what you're seeing in the updated policy language for, so that we can maybe move forward after we take public comment? Anyone else? Okay. So I think we're at the time of public comment. There is no community members in the room right now. So are there any virtual comments? Mrs. Buford?
I guess the question is, there's a, there's a public comment on homework this evening, but the, there is not an agenda item this evening on homework. Would the board like us to read that comment? It is, there isn't an agenda item on homework. We will communicate with this parent. It's been shared with the board, and we will get back to the board on that. But, but there is not an agenda item on homework.
Thanks, Dr. McGary. Actually, the document was just updated to include that by one of our virtual secretaries. So at this time, there are no public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for communicating with the parents that might have emailed in about other things. We try to be as comprehensive as we can, the administration, in answering parental concerns outside of board meetings. So this isn't the only way to access the board and the administration. So Ms. Kelly, if you could review the two agenda items for, to see if we're ready to move forward with them. And again, I'm, when we, when I'm ready to call on you, we're going to go down the table this way.
Okay. So the first agenda item was the Administrator Action Research Topics. So this evening, I presented nine topics for the 21-22 school year that our administrative team will be investigating throughout this school year and providing updates through the comprehensive planning process as well as through the evaluation process. So if this moves forward, it would be a vote at the October board meeting.
Okay. Is everyone on this side of the table comfortable with moving it forward?
Yes.
The topics?
Yes.
And going down this side?
Yes.
All right. So it looks like that can move forward to the October board meeting. And the next one is the attendance policy.
Correct.
And it's just minor language changes. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right. I think we are good for that to move forward also to the October meeting. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to President Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and People's Services Committee meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.